A peace, peace, peace to the family. This is Ikembo Joray of We Charge Colonialism. Here with another Black Blueprint for Black Power Study Session. And you know, as usual, first thing I'm gonna ask you guys to do is to hit that like button. Subscribe to the channel if you haven't subscribed already. And share this with your folks, you know, share this with your folks so they can be a part of the study session as we continue to build. On the That's the Blueprint for Black Power by Dr. Emerson Wilson. I'm excited about getting into this study. Dr. Emerson Wilson has a born day coming up next month too, so just keep that on your radar. Probably do something really big on that day. Dr. Emerson Wilson and W B Du Bois actually share a birthday, so you know, maybe. Do something covering both of them, not particularly a study session, but something separate. So you know, this is We Charge Colonialism Grassroots Think Tank. Just doing the work and making sure that we are fighting for the minds of African people. Minds that has been for the last 500, 600 years. Been under the political, economic, and social domination of European powers who have been able to capture key institutions. And institutions are important as Dr. Bobby Wright says, you know, you, if you control the minds, you can control the behinds. Controlling the institutions is very important to capture those institutions is a, is a means to control the minds and behaviors of the people who are dependent on those institutions. And so we're gonna get into the study, the blueprint for Black Power. This is a study. Or this is a text that Dr. Emerson Wilson put out in the 90s. He said it was a moral imperative for 21st century. Peace to the folks, peace to the folks. Hey, what's going on? Appreciate you being on, as usual, as usual. But Dr. Emerson Wilson, he puts out this text in the 90s. And he said, this is a moral imperative for the, for the 21st century, moral, economic, political imperative for the 21st century. And here we are in the 21st century and there's not enough study. Around our examination of this text by peoples, especially the great leaders. That we do have because we do have great leaders now, and I think we have to do more in implementing the strategies that Dr. Emerson Wilson had laid out for us. I, I do want to give credit to Chairman O'Malley Yeshitella though, out in St. Louis, who has a Black Power Blueprint. That I want you guys to Google that. Maybe I'll put a link in the, in the chat to make it easier for you guys. But that I really have seen, don't get me wrong, our people are creating institutions, talking about organization, revolutionary organization. That is really implementing or attempting to implement and apply the strategies put in this book. And the Black Power Blueprint is a good example of that. So with that being said though, getting to this text. I'm on page 13 and I'm still dealing with coercion as power. So we talked about force. Let me see if I can put this link in the chat. We talked about forces power and now Dr. Wilson is making the contrast between forces power with coercion is power. Even though both of those things, force and coercion can really be used interchangeably. But Dr. Wilson is, is being clear on, on some key differences when he's talking about force and coercion. And so let me get into that in a second. How's everybody doing? It's a new year. I'm feeling good. I'm feeling at peace. I told myself I'm going to come into 2023. Leaving behind a lot of baggage, leaving behind just like a lot of things that I felt that was not bringing me peace, not bringing peace into my life. Felt like I wasn't being as productive as I could have been and, and given more to the movement that I could be given. Just because of the space that I was in. So you know, I made a lot of changes. I want to be a lot more consistent with these, with these studies as well. So you're gonna see more of these study sessions, you're gonna see We Charge Colonialism. Being, you know, we did a lot last year, but this year we, we thought and we really want to step it up and, and be a major impact on the liberation of Africa, the minds and bodies of African people. Yeah, we do this for African people, you know, if you're black, you African, you know, you descended from, I don't care where you are. If you in Haiti, Jamaica, Trinidad, United States, if you're black. And your people came over from Africa, I don't care how long ago, then you are African. And this has to be our politic, because, because the world has a politic that's against African people. They have a politic and economic policy that's against the benefit of African people. So in order for us to overturn this global system is that we have to do a better job of, of creating a social system that involves African people all over. And we're making a coordinated and concerted effort to overturn the oppression and exploitation of African people, no matter where we are. So let me get a lot of talk and I'm on page, I'm, I'm starting on the second paragraph. I'm gonna put a link to the blueprint in the chat. Our people know that we do have people out here doing the work. And they need, our people need to see more of it. I'm having like some, don't come to me. Can you guys hear me? Like just cut. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. I'm having trouble putting something in the chat, but I'm just going to go reading. Can you guys hear me okay? Alright, there we go. Alright, oh. Cause you guys.
There we go. Alright, oh. Alright, there we go.
Alright. Alright, how am I sounding now? You guys are able to hear me. Alright, so let me get into the reading before anything else happens of second paragraph, page 13. Second paragraph, page 13. So the long history of white America, white American domination of black Americans, which has been enforced and reinforced by the use of physical force and violence, psychic violence and coercive power. Has in effect convinced the majority of blacks that whites are invincible. Moreover, this history has undermined. Moreover, this history has undermined the self-confidence of most blacks, narrowed their vision of their possibilities and power, restricted their aspirations to the narrow confines of racial accommodation and assimilation. To being the paternalistic recipients of whites. Rather than expanding their aspirations to include the overcoming of white power and achieving full unfettered self liberation. The unending maintenance of this self-defeating state of mind in blacks is the fundamental objective of white power. And the keystone upon which the infrastructure facade of white power rests. Alright, so you know, in that paragraph, Dr. Emerson Wilson again is just talking about this manipulation, this manip- manipulation. That Europeans are as powerful as they are, that there's, there's no need to go up against the system of white power. Because it is only gonna mean your demise. So the, so the best path forward is if you can't, it's sort of that if you can't beat them, join them approach. That has been pushed by is particularly those people from our community who are in positions of power. And then you have people from the masses who parrot what they say, and they adopt this philosophy. Even the most oppressed and exploited Africans under the system of white domination. Will adopt the philosophy of integrating and assimilating with a system that is causing harm to them, that is detrimental to their livelihood. It's almost like playing the Lotto, you know, it's, you know, for me, I'm just gonna use that analogy. You, you play the Lotto and the odds of winning is, is slim to none. And so in the system of European political and economic domination, like the, the struggle to become a self, to be a liberated and independent people. Inside the system of white, obviously white domination is like playing the Lotto, you know, it's slim to none. We have to separate from this, from the system that they had created, that they had designed. Because it was designed to benefit, they didn't design it for African people. And so we can't continue to, to, to play this game. Now, we have to do things in order to survive. But we have to develop a plan to get away, to create an alternative system to it, but Dr. Wilson is getting into this sort of, I'm just, I'm gonna reread this part when he says. The self, he said, moreover, this history has undermined the self-confidence of most blacks. When he talked with the history he's talking about, particularly when we're using, talking about force and coercion. We're talking about centuries to pro, you know, segregation, lynching, media manipulation, police violence, all of these things. And this goes back into coercion, where it's that threat. It's that threat that I can cause harm to you, that's gonna keep you from doing certain things. That's gonna keep you from responding and reacting in a certain way. And I used the example before of when George Floyd was murdered and how people just watched that happen. And so we have to overcome that we can wipe the nation. It themselves out to be, we're the most powerful folks. We have the numbers, the, the power is in the people, as the Black Panther Party used to say. But going into the next paragraph, he says, we are not arguing here that white power is purely delusional or does not contain truly lethal actualities. However, we are arguing that if black Americans and Africans, the world over, do not permit themselves to be psyched out by white racist propaganda. If they both recognize and actualize their potential to neutralize white power. And either it's imagined or actual forms, they can buy these means, neutralize it. Alright, so you know, it's again, it's all about, the, the problem is, is that we are not controlling the narrative. We send our children to schools where they're being educated by institutions that has been propped up by, by the colonizer. I don't care, you know, what color the person is or what their ethnicity or background is that appears to be in power. Today, they're just carrying on the program of the colonizer. That's what many of our people who are in positions of power in this system are doing. And this is why, you know, you don't really see any revolutionaries in positions of power in this system. You know, from the black, I don't care how many black mirrors you have, black city councilmen, black billionaires. You know, just listen to the rhetoric that comes out their mouth. They're not talking about building an alternative system to the colonial system that we're a part of. This isn't a system, again, I'm gonna repeat, it isn't a system that's built, it's, it's, it's an inhumane system at the end of the day. We have to have serious conversations about the system of colonial capitalism as an inhumane system, as a parasitic system that needs to be dismantled. In order to save our people from genocide, the genocide that has been waged, that has been committed against African people for the last 500, 600 years. When the first European came to Africa and began snatching Africans off of the continent and bringing them to the Americas or to Europe, that was the beginning of the genocidal actions of Europeans against African people. It's a genocidal system. And so when we talk about, when we look at the rates of African people who died in system, that global system compared to Europeans. Why are more Africans under this system dying more at a higher rate than Europeans is because the system is designed for Europeans. They benefit, they live longer under this system than African people. Why? Because they're biologically superior to African people? Is this why they live longer? Because they're more intelligent than African people? It's a people, African people have been on this planet longer than any other group of people. But you mean to tell me that these Europeans, there's something about these Europeans that's superior to the African? No, it's a social system that has been created by the European that allows them to live at the expense of African people. And so they want to maintain in this system, keep it because of force, because of force and because of coercion, among other means of, of power. And so I'm, I'm just gonna go into one more paragraph before we conclude. The, I'm at the bottom of page 13. The productivity of coercion. So Dr. Wilson says, we can recall from our prior discussion that the use of force is essentially socially negative, expensive, and prone to provoke overt resistance to its application by those subjected to it. And we talked about that when we, when we discussed force. We also intimated that force is essentially restrictive and preventative in character, more effective in obstructing people's behavior than in causing them to behave in a certain productive way, in certain productive ways from the power holder's point of view. Coercion in contrast to the use of raw force permits the power holder to benefit more readily from the subordinate subjects' actions and reactions. According to Wordingberg, unlike force, coercive power actually functions by getting an agent to do something. The logic of the threat is precisely is positing an action that an agent is able to forestall by acting in an appropriate manner. For Wordingberg, on page 14, for Wordingberg coercive power. Or is that, which is a part of the support subject. And two, because the actions of the subordinate subject elicited by coercive threat may actually produce something of value or of benefit to the coercive power holder. The scope of coercive power, particularly in its political and institutional forms, is as argues wrong, at least in the short run. Undoubtedly, the most effective form, in the short run, undoubtedly the most effective form of power in extensiveness, comprehensiveness, and intensity. So we have, I mean, just reading this, we have to be also very conscious of how effective coercion is. This is how, again, this is how the system is maintained to this day. This is why people, you don't see widespread revolutionary actions among African people, despite living under a system that's genocidal. Despite living under the system that's parasitic, right? And I'm gonna spend some time as we move forward and have these discussions and talking about what type of systems we need to be creating and establishing as African people. Because everything that the European, if we imitate the European, all we're gonna do is, is all we're gonna do is empower the system of colonial capitalism. We're gonna perpetuate the relationship of oppression and, and I'm sorry, the relationship of oppressor and oppressed, of exploiter and exploited. Right? So we can't imitate, we can't imitate it. We have to do the complete opposite of what we see happening under this social system. That's the only way you dismantle the system and develop a more humane system. So in order to get rid of a humane system, you have to create a humane system. And so we're gonna talk more about that. But the point here again, like this, this use, when we talk about coercion, I mean, the police, the military of the laws that are put in place, right? Certain, certain ideas that are propagated amongst people, all of these things that are used to pose fear or to strike fear into the oppressed. So that they don't react in a way that, that will liberate them. They don't react in a revolutionary or liberating way, right? And so that's done because if I do something that is unlawful, then I may be arrested. Or I may be killed by the police. So I'm just gonna follow the law and do the right thing. And hopefully doing the right thing, I can be successful and liberate myself. And, and every individual needs to do the same thing, just, just abide by the law, no matter how oppressive the system is, no matter how corrupt you know, the government is. Just abide by the law and you can climb the social ladder. This is the, you know, this is oh man, you know, like this is the propaganda that's spread and it's been spread for a long time. How do you think that, you know, Europeans in the early colonial, early colonial times, and I'm just gonna speak about America, colonial America. You had Europeans that were leaving Europe, coming to America because of the picture that was painted of all of the opportunities that was here. But these Europeans was coming here, they was dying, they was, most of them were something as, as indentured servants. And a lot of them didn't even survive through their indentured servitude, right? But there was a picture that was painted of opportunities and stuff, but most people did not, they, most people did not become landowners. Most people remain laborers, workers, and were exploited and oppressed. So it's always, and then it was this, I, but it was this idea that was pushed that you know, that you can, you have an opportunity to own land here. And that you can be free and the only way to be free is land ownership. And so now it was this dichotomy that was created between the, the business person or the property owner and the landless and the worker. And the dichotomy that was created was saying, hey, you know, it, it looked down, it just, it degraded the worker. So that, you know, if you was a worker, you would look down upon within the society. So now everybody's like, the only way that I can you know, over, the only way that I can overcome my oppression and exploitation, overcome this status or this condition of slavery and only way I can be respected as a man, you know, like as a man, right? Is to own land, is to own property. But you know, the point I'm making is just this propaganda goes back centuries and it's the same thing today. Like nobody wants to be a worker, everybody wants to be an entrepreneur, they wanna be a business person. But the reality is, is that the workers are the ones who are producing everything, they're producing the wealth. They're the ones who, you, you would not have everything that you see, that we use, these phones, computers. These are workers that are putting these things together. Now, the entrepreneur, the person who has the idea, should they benefit from their ideas and so forth? Yes. But there has to be a better relationship between those people who are coming up with these ideas and who seem to wealth. But that's for another, that's a discussion for another day. But just last one I'll make in regards to this coercion, again, this distinction that he's making between force, where he said force is restrictive. So again, that's ineffective. Force is good to keep a person from doing certain things. So when there was the uprising, when there was the killing of Ahmaud Arbery, Brianna Teller, George Floyd just recently. And there was an uprising and people were like burning police cars, they were burning police stations. It was like rebellion all across the country. The police was sometimes use force, but there was always that, and even when they showed up. The, it was still that threat that kept the masses of people from going even further than they would have gone. So the police were still able, even in those situations, police were still able to arrest people. Like they still were able to take people down to the police station. It's because of this threat now, the, if, the, if, the, if they didn't have that coercion of that power of coercion, the people would have been liberated and, and not to say that it wasn't done, because I've seen people be liberated on the streets. But it would have been happening in masses. People would have been going in the police station and snatching the keys and unlocking the cells and taking people out of the cells, putting police officers in the cells. That, that would have been a revolution, right? But it just shows how deep the courage, the power of coercion is. Where even the masses of people, the majority of people still didn't go as far as revolution despite the atrocities that were taking place. Despite knowing racism exists, despite understanding the capitalist exploitation that is taking place in this country. They talked, they talked about all of these things that's happening, but nobody was willing to go the extra mile. So it just shows how deep it is. But this is why we have to control the narrative. So I'm, you know, I'm gonna leave it there. We got the 27 minute mark. I appreciate everybody for joining. Let's see, oh man, that's the, the, the power, I just love the you know, our instant, Dr. Bobby Wright. But do we replace one European system with another one? That is Marxism, or do we draw from our African philosophies and create our own? Man, we gotta draw from African philosophies, like this is I'm gonna try to, you know, sum this up really quick. The, to be African is to is to be self-determined, is to see yourself as African and to develop systems from your experience. And so we have to do things that's gonna benefit African people and not necessarily particularly ideology, these are social constructs, right? Marxism, socialism, and what that means, right? Capitalism and what that means. Now, the, not to say that the interactions that happen between people aren't real, but the way that they are described, because the, the, the concept itself is never practiced the way that it's, that is never practiced the way that is described, not in absolute, right? But the, when, just using capitalism in regards to like the different aspects of capital, you'll see that, but you won't see like laissez-faire capitalism, so it's usually like these mixed economies, right? So you know, what we need to do, and this is as creators, we're gonna establish something and we need to describe the system as we're building it. But it has to be a system that's gonna be humane and is that, and it's gonna benefit African people, particularly the African working class who represents the masses of people. And that's African, because if you, if you look at the African people being the original people on the planet and how they survive, how did they survive for all of these centuries? It was through communalism. It was from, and, and when I say communalism, describing a system of an egalitarian system where everybody worked together, everybody was on the same level, you know, part of the same social class, and they worked together in order for them to survive. Because if they didn't, if somebody went against the grain, that could be detrimental to the whole community. That can cause the whole community, the, cause the destruction of the whole community. So everyone had to be on the same page, imbue to it, absolutely. So you know, that's, and we can revisit that, definitely like these same questions and statements that, because this I, I hate like, like two minutes trying to give an answer to these things too. Cause I think like these are Um, because I think like these are conversations we have to have, like really in detail. Um, so with that being said, though, man, I would appreciate thirty, you know, I went thirty minutes. I mean, I talk about like I'm I'm gonna go ten fifteen minutes, but sometimes uh, Dr. Wilson, you know, he, you know, you have to like really go in and um and uh give a thorough and not thorough analysis of what it is that he's saying. So I try to do that. But I want to appreciate Eric, I jumped on to uh the study session today. Uh, I will be on Sunday at nine P M uh for another study session. That will be the next one, this Sunday at nine P M. And that's gonna be the consistent time, every Sunday at nine P M, I will be doing these sessions. Uh, A, peace, peace, appreciate you. Um, and the continued support uh that you're giving. Um, so yeah, every Sunday nine nine P M, I'm gonna be here and do throughout the week. Uh, depending on my schedule, I'm gonna try to squeeze uh another one of these study sessions in. All right. So um, you know, you guys enjoy.